Paula, he's ready whenever you are.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. If everybody could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Moving forward, there are no adjustments tonight for the agenda. Next is approval of minutes. We have Wednesday, January 31st, 2024, executive session at 3:30 PM. Monday, February 5th, budget workshop at 4 PM. And the same Monday, 5th, regular meeting at 6 PM. Wednesday, February 7th, budget workshop at 4 PM. Monday, February 12th, budget workshop at 4:30. February 12th, executive session at 6:30. February 14th, which is a Wednesday, executive session 3 PM, February 14th, budget workshop at 4 PM. Tuesday, February 20th, budget workshop at 12. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented. So moved? Thank you very much. Seconded by Emily. Thank you. All in favor? All in favor. Okay, time for public comments. I know that we had eight people. Okay. Before we begin the public comments, I would like to make a statement. If everybody could please listen carefully. In order that the board have time to fully consider and discuss the issues, I am setting aside up to however long it's going to take for eight people to come up and speak and say what they'd like to say. I would like to limit the time for everybody to speak to three minutes if possible. That way, we can move forward with the meeting. For those that have not participated in our meetings before, I want to review a few rules ahead of time to ensure that the public comment process goes smoothly and there are no surprises. At the outset, we ask that speakers identify themselves. We'd like to know your name. Please try to be brief and try not to repeat yourself for the sake of giving everybody a chance to speak. We know discussions of school-related issues can get emotional, but please remember our children are watching and we're all neighbors and community members. So please be civil. We will not permit profanity or shouting at one another or comments that disparage and attack individuals or groups of individuals. Speakers should direct all comments to the board, the committee. This is an opportunity for the committee to listen to the opinions of the public that relate to school and educational matters. It is not a public debate or conversation, so no questions should be directed to the committee and the committee will not be responding to any questions if they are asked. We want to listen and hear what you have to say. The board, the committee will not permit complaints or allegations against staff members. These are personnel matters which the committee is not permitted to hear in public. If there are complaints against staff, they will be handled appropriately through our complaint procedure. Thank you for your patience while I read this. Look forward to hearing what you have to say tonight and we appreciate you being here. I just want to add, I don't mean to be rude. I am going to be looking at my phone because I'm going to put the timer on my phone for the three minutes, okay? Okay, if I butcher your name, please forgive me. Judith Barnett?
Yeah, I have him explained right there.
Just move the microphone close to you. And then if you press where it says "push", the little green light will light up.
Push?
Yep.
Got it.
And test it first because you never know.
You might need more than that. My name is Judy Burnett. I'm signed up to speak, but I would like to give my time to Stephanie Jopling, who has a prepared statement that is timed at just over three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Jopling. I have a child who currently attends the Sanford High School Alternative Learning Program. I came into this whole situation as a concerned mom who needed to advocate for the best interest of her child in the alternative learning program, a position I know several of you members have been in at one time or another on this board. The same week that I found out about this cut marched the one-year point from the last time I had to leave my child at crisis for the third time in just over a year. While they were gone, they worked on their application for this program that their counselor had recommended. They came home, interviewed for it, and were accepted into ALT. And here we are, a year later. The phenomenal improvement in attendance, visits to the guidance and nurse, which had been a daily occurrence, are almost non-existent. I've gone from having to pick up my child early from school almost once a week last year to only once this year, except now it's two because I had to pick them up today because it was a hard day for them to come back to. But I know you've heard a lot of personal stories over this past couple of weeks and I imagine you'll hear more tonight. So I just, I want to address more specific questions. I want, not questions so much, but concerns. Concerns were raised during past public comments when discussing how to spend ESTR funds. The board at the time was cautioned about hiring aggressively when they chose to hire, what I understand at the time to be about 54 positions. Though at the time were not meant to be retained based on the wording in the ESTR III application. And I think about 75% was of the ESTR funds and that they were warned in a follow-up after that decision that in two or three years, we would be in this exact position. Now you have a choice to get rid of the ESTR-funded positions or sacrifice a program that has been around for decades and is needed now more than ever. So my question is, why are we cutting an important pre-existing program to keep positions that were supposed to be temporary for a situation that we are mostly on the other side of? How has the staff and student footprint changed between 2019 and now that justifies these changes and this huge sacrifice? A sacrifice that you've been warned will be the next to impossible to get back once it's been cut. If you were a member of this committee in 2021 and 2022, you were warned then about that, both by a concerned citizen but also from within, Mr. Nelson. You said at the ESTR meeting on February 2nd, 2022, "We want to maximize these funds, but we also want to make sure when we're done, we're not walking ourselves off a big cliff." You said this would need to be handled skillfully and thoughtfully. Your wording makes me think of a surgeon. You wanted the precision of a scalpel, but cutting ALT is the equivalent of amputating a limb with a hacksaw. Newer members of the board, newer member of the board, I hope you keep these facts in mind because, and understand the history of this funding. There's a moral obligation to protect this program and follow through on what we were led to believe when these funds were first given to us, that the positions would be temporary and not funded by the local budget. Because make no mistake, cutting ALT now is just a Band-Aid and if this goes through, we will be right back here with another program on the line next year. Right now, we're talking about this 1.2% of the student population, but next year, it could be the gifted program or another specialized program. Mr. Nelson, you were right. We're at that cliff now. Committee members, please don't avoid going over it by shoving these kids off it. I'm sorry. Please don't put me back at the bedside of my child in the ER at 3:00 in the morning, holding their hand and praying that there's no lasting damage because swallowing a handful of pills and not existing was easier for them than the thought of spending one more day at that school. Sorry. Over the past week, I've been consuming information at a rate akin to trying to drink from a fire hose, reading documents, watching past meetings. I'm trying to understand all of this with changing information at times. I'm just a mom in way over my head trying to understand and to advocate for my child and the goalposts keep moving. I am begging you to think carefully for the sake of the students in the program, please. Sorry. Do not eliminate the alternative learning program.
Thank you, Stephanie. Elv Jopling?
My name is Elv Jopling. I'm a sophomore at the ALT school. I've struggled with mental health issues for pretty much as long as I can remember. However, it really started to get worse during COVID and the end of COVID lockdown. I started going back in person in eighth grade and I felt awful. I was mostly isolated, couldn't participate in class. I wore noise-canceling headphones because the noise and discomfort of being around so many people who I had no connection to would cause anxiety attacks. Started to stop the whole farm to distract myself from all the stress and anxiety. A little over halfway through that school year, someone noticed the marks and after sharing that I had thoughts of suicide, I had the first of three stays at a crisis unit. I was diagnosed with depression and I felt numb the entire time. After that followed two suicide attempts and two more crisis stays. During this time, in the days I made it to school, I was in the guidance office every single day. Sometimes I would be in the reception crying for an hour while waiting for a counselor to be available. When I returned for my third stay, from the suggestion of my guidance counselor, I joined ALT. Since then, I have been so much happier. I started participating more in class and struggled less with completing work. Feel more comfortable around people and I'm actually able to focus because of it. On days when I still struggle, I'm able to get support and use my coping skills while remaining in the environment that I can learn. I wouldn't be where I am today without ALT. The people on this committee have said multiple times that students who is put back into the mainstream with this cut will be supported, but so far, the only thing you've come up with are the guidance counselors and social workers. It's the same supports ALT was had before joining ALT and it wasn't working. If the solution is to put myself and other students back into a position to spend hours outside of the learning environment to get the support we need, what's the point of me coming to school?
Thank you, Elv. Sophie Billado?
Hello, I'm Sophie Billado. I wrote a speech, but I kind of just want to speak from my heart right now. I was a student at the Sanford Alternative School Program from 2016 to 2019 when I was able to graduate. Prior to that, I did not attend school. I skipped out on my entire freshman and sophomore years, going to my junior year with no credits at all. I was able to get my credits within two and a half years and eventually graduate in three years because of the alternative school. I was just like Elv. I had suicidal ideations. I had addiction problems at home. I had a brother who I lost and I was having a hard time finding it in myself to get to school. And I was presented with the alternative program. I didn't think that anything like that existed for me until I was given the option. And I met with the teachers and they gave me a chance. And I was able to graduate. I have pictures of me with all three of the teachers and it's not something I ever thought I could do. I didn't even think that something like this was something I could ever do. I didn't even, I've never even dreamed of talking in front of a bunch of people and whoever's watching on the live stream. I would also like to speak to the fact that you said that counselors are going to be the alternative to, for the kids that are going to not have this program. I not once in high school went to see my counselor for anything. It's, I had problems that would not have been solved by going to see a counselor. I needed, I needed the individual attention that these teachers were able to provide. I needed the family and the connection that I felt. You, Nelson, Matt Nelson, you went to our Thanksgivings. You saw the community that we have in that program that's only allowed when you have the same 40 students that you see all day. A lot of those kids are in that program all day. I know some go out into the high school. And I think that this, getting rid of this program is ultimately going to be a detriment to our community. I think that, I know, I do not envy any of you. This is a really hard and difficult decision to make and I know that a lot of people are going to have similar stories to me. But I do think that this is not just going to affect the students that are in it, but students in the future. People like me that are hoping to raise a family in this community and might have kids with my similar problems and mental health issues that need a program like this. My family, I know I have people in my family that could use this program in the future. I have, I just, I think the scope of this problem, you might be looking at it as it affects 40 students right now, but it affects so many more. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Michael Kane?
Hey, so good evening, everyone. So I'm Michael Kane. I am a co-chair of the Health and PE Department at the high school. And I just wanted to come and speak, like a lot of people, on the staffing cuts. And so first of all, a deep and genuine thank you, a gratitude to all of you for what you do every week, every month, every year. The work that you do and the work that you're doing right now is not lost on us. So in our PE department at the high school, our Health and PE department, we're responsible at the high school, in the new school, for an area, geographic area, that's probably bigger than a football field or right around there. It's enormous. We have two full gymnasiums. We have four locker rooms, two girls locker rooms, two boys locker rooms. We have a health classroom. We have a cardio fitness room. We have a weight room. We have 200-yard hallways and we have a third hallway, plus about 1,000 feet of storage where we keep the vast majority of our equipment. And then we have an outdoor element to our department where our kayaks and canoes and climbing elements are outside down along the river. It's a monumental task for four people to manage that geographic space. Next year, to do it with three will just be, it'll be more challenging. It's at a time when just in schools across the country, students just gravitate towards that part of the school, the Health and PE department. They just, whether they're supposed to be there or not, they gravitate down. It's a wonderful place to be, great teachers down there. It's a great vibe. It's exercise. Everybody's moving. It's a wonderful place to be. A lot of people want to be there. So we get a lot of traffic down there, which is challenging for four people to manage, let alone teach, instruct, motivate, inspire, all the things that teachers do. In addition to the space, because of our scheduling, each of the four teachers has nine, we teach, like right now, I have nine different classes that I teach, nine different rosters of students. So that's for the other three teachers as well. It's a lot of students. Over the course of the year, we teach anywhere from 950 to 1,000 students over the course of the year, the four teachers. And it is, it's a lot. To do that with three teachers, we don't know what that's going to be like, but it's going to be really challenging in a space that big. Like all schools, whether it's bullying or vaping or skipping classes or theft, those issues, the three, the four of us are responsible for, like I said, four locker rooms and gymnasiums and just a lot of space where teenagers are, whether they're supposed to be or not. I will wrap it up. The two more points I just want to make is that with a lockdown a year ago, which was harrowing to say the least in an area that big, to do that with one less teacher, I don't know what that means. I just know that it's been brought up in conversation in a space like that where there are 11 doors that we potentially need to lock during a lockdown with a key. It's not just a single classroom. There's more to the space than that. Finally, the last thing I want to say is, those are logistics. Everybody who, every school, every department that is going to see a teacher potentially leave, that's hard to swallow. And for us, in particular, with Marty Kane, who is the Health and PE teacher in our department, who we're looking that we may lose, this is devastating to us. If you know Marty Kane, they, they don't come around like Marty Kane every day. She is from this community, born and raised, graduated here, coached at the college level, is one of the best teachers I've ever seen in my life. A varsity field hockey coach. Teachers are hard to come by. Good teachers are really hard to come by. Teachers like Marty Kane don't come around very often. And so we're going to, we're going to deal with that the best that we can. But we love Sanford High School. We love this school department and we just wanted to come up and say that, we just wanted to say that more than anything, we're hoping to keep Marty Kane where she is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Mary Gannaway?
I taught at the Sanford School System for 43 years, but I'm speaking as a citizen and a taxpayer tonight. And the citizens of Sanford want an increase in the number of students who receive a high school diploma. If we keep the ALT program, many students will graduate. We know that education does not cost, it pays. And our family is happy to have our taxes increased, if necessary, to fund this crucial program. And keep in mind, these students have had decades of counseling and support outside of the school. They need to be in an environment where every second of the day they're supported by these highly-trained professionals. And I was thinking, I know you have a problem in terms of cutting the budget, but life is full of compromises. What would you think of keeping the salaries and the insurances of these three teachers and let the community that have supported this ALT program for a long time to fundraising? And when I was in the school system, I was known as the grant princess. I would be willing to write grants so that the Sanford School System does not have to supply the materials or their field trips. We will rally behind these children. So I thank you very much for that consideration because life is full of compromises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Joy Haddad? Did I say that right correctly? Okay.
My name is Joy Haddad. I have never been to a school board meeting. I think I've been to two PTA events. There's certainly more people that are better qualified in this school department to handle that stuff than I am. And the reason I say that is I'm not originally from Sanford. I was homeschooled K through 12. Some of you know that. Homeschooling, the epitome of alternative education. There is, not everyone has the ability to take care of their kids in their home and provide them a different education if they need to. I'm going to apologize right now. I'm somebody that has a lot of social anxiety. Again, 10 years living in Sanford, this is the meeting that I come out to. I've done. I'm sorry? But I also, as an adult with social anxiety, and I've overcome some of that stuff. You know, in my volunteer work in the city in the last few years, I've tried to make it focused on educational and youth outreach. And kids that right now maybe have some of these struggles, if there's a program that can help them be successful and stay in school, as many others have said, rather than dropping out and looking, having no other options, say, to risk a shoplifting charge because they can't feed themselves, you know? I would be happy to vote again. I voted in support of every single school budget that's ever been presented. I go to the elections every time, no question. Just tell me where to fill in the bubble, okay? I'll eat it again. I apologize. Not profanity, but if we back out on the kids now, when we've been telling them their whole lives that they can count on us, stay in school. Please stay in school. We've got your backs. But we backed out on them now, what message does that send? My voice is shaking. You were the third one to speak? You did a lot better job speaking, advocating for yourself and your classmates than I am right now. That is the difference, okay? Of someone who has been able to benefit from programs like this versus me. Still pretty darn nervous with no intervention. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. I don't see anybody else with a star next to their name, which usually means that, do you, okay.
To the left of my name. I find the wrong thing.
Oh. No, it's me only looking on the right side. Okay. Okay. Wanda, would you like? Wanda Parent?
Good evening. I think almost most of you know me. My name's Wanda Parent. I'm the director of Stuff the Bus Mean. I also run a free youth program called Right Brain Club that is, I'm hoping, the foundation of a community center for kids in this town. It's a free program that kids can attend. We do literacy support and arts enrichment. It's kind of at the beginning steps. I have a lot higher goals for it, but that's a work in progress. I am going to share some pretty personal stuff about me because I was in an alternative program at Sanford High School back in the 80s. I came to Sanford as a fleeing domestic violence. My father was not a good human being. And for the first few months that I lived in Sanford, I was 14 years old, we slept on my sister's living room floor until we were able to get housing. My educational journey was a difficult one. I did not enjoy school because it was very, very hard for me. I was a slow reader. I had many, many factors. I was one of 13 children. We went without everything. It made me who I am. And I understand that the types of education that we need in our community are very, very expensive. And these decisions are not something anybody's excited about making. But I would have been one of those losses had it not been for an alternative program at Sanford High School. I was a runaway at 17. I went from, left my parents' home and went to stay with a relative. It was going from one bad situation to a worse situation. And I had Jeff Ward, a co-op teacher, who came and knocked on my door. He went above and beyond. And that's what a lot of these ALTed teachers do. They are going above and beyond. And I'm sure a lot of it, most of us have no idea what they're doing to help these kids. And they're kids like me, kids that need it. There's no perfect solution. I wish there was. I wish I had a big enough checking account that I could cut a check to fund this program because I would do it tomorrow. But that teacher came and knocked on my door and he said, "You're a smart person. What are you doing? I talked with all your teachers. You can retake your exams." That was my senior year of high school. And because of that, alternative education program teacher, I graduated. And because of that, alternative education program teacher, I graduated. I would not have gone back. I had too many things against me at home. I worked with these kids, a lot of the kids from the JMG programs. A lot of the kids from the ALT program, they come and volunteer for me. I helped them in other ways privately when they come to me for, I had one boy that volunteered for me two weeks ago. His sneaker was taped together with duct tape. Someone had given me a pair of shoes the day before and said, "I don't know what I'm gonna do with these, but they're practically brand new." I said, "Don't worry, I'll find a home for them." And that boy turned up the next day, and I looked down at his shoes, and I said, "I don't want to embarrass you, but what size are your shoes?" And they happened to be the exact size of that brand-new pair of shoes that I was given. These kids are awesome. And they need this program. It's about survival. In my life, it wasn't just a school program, it was survival. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda. Rae McCloy. Rhea? Rhea.
Good evening. Thanks for having this opportunity for people in the community to share. I did not grow up in Sanford. I grew up across the country, and I am a proud graduate of an alternative high school program that put out not only teachers like myself, State Patrol officers, Washington Education Association lobbyists, and a variety of other leaders that are in that community. So for me, when I looked at this, I thought that would be something that would have impacted me as a young person. And also being a professional, seeing students in schools, I see that our need is gonna grow. And when we cut programs, getting them back is very hard to do. It could take decades to get back a meaningful program. So for me, I went to our school board policies, and our school policies, which said our district's pillars for student, one of our district's pillars for student success centers around building a school community whose climate and culture fosters an environment where everyone engages in positive interactions, attitudes, and behaviors. It additionally says that we'll provide educational environment designed to encourage each student to acquire the necessary skills and perspectives needed for a meaningful life and career. The school committee fully accepts the responsibility of formulating policies and acquiring adequate funding to support the education, education process. That's written on our, it's public on our website. For myself, I know for myself that I may not be in that school. I don't know those students personally. But those are your future teachers in Sanford. Those are the people that will stay committed to their community. They are the future nurses, the family doctors, the different people, our future school board members, potentially future superintendents who are gonna remember their experiences, and they're gonna take them back home. And they're going to put that hard work back into their community. So removing this program is inevitably going to just hurt everyone in Sanford, because we might be taking away the opportunity of learning for each of those students and for everyone that might have different needs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhea. Jazz Sweet.
Hi, I'm Jazz Sweet. I'm an alternative student, school student, and my freshman year was an awful experience until I joined ALT. Every day I was having up to eight anxiety attacks. And that was sometimes just within school hours. I was in the counseling office almost every other day, oftentimes more than that. I was so anxious all the time. And my home life was kind of a mess, too. It wasn't until I joined ALT, after being recommended it by a counselor, that I started to finally figure myself out again and just kind of find strategies that worked. I had never been good in school before that. I was lucky if I didn't have at least one failing grade a year per semester. And now my grades are the highest they've ever been. I'm finally in a place where I can just kind of relax at home. I've found friends. And I've just very much improved mentally. I don't think I've ever felt more confident in a social situation since before joining ALT. And it's just been a huge positive impact on my life, and the sense of community in those classrooms is incredible. To put forty students that are struggling with issues like I have been into a situation they know doesn't work is just ridiculous. It's not solving anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Jazz. Michelle Morley.
Sorry. Hello, I am Michelle Morley, and I am a current alternative school member. For as long as I can remember, I struggled with my grades and with my mental health. All the way back to kindergarten, I could not pay attention in school. Um, sorry. My anxiety really started to take off in eighth grade. And then we hit COVID freshman year, and I was online. When we came back sophomore year, I was failing everything. I was having anxiety attacks every single day. I could not stay in school. My mom would pick me up every single day. I mean it. And I wasn't seen by the teachers. I wasn't seen by anyone. I sat in a class one time crying in front of everyone, in a situation just like this, actually. Everyone was looking at me like this, and I was sobbing from an anxiety attack. And I was not seen, and I was not heard. And I just tormented myself in private until my parents caught on to what was happening, and I was moved into the alternative school. And since then, um, I am doing amazing. I have friends, which I did not have before. I was no friends before. I have so many friends now, so many great people that I can look to for support. And I've learned to study. I couldn't study before. I didn't know how. My amazing teachers, Webb, Burkett, Jenny, Stetson, they've all helped in so many ways. And I really couldn't have done it without the ALT school. So many students like me have struggled in so many similar ways. Everyone, well, not everyone, but so many people that I've talked to. Depression, anxiety, self-harm, eating disorders, everything that just can't be seen the same way in the main building as we are seen in the ALT school. It supports us. I'm sorry if I'm rambling. I'm nervous. But, um, yeah, I'm on track to graduate. I'm in SRTC. I'm gonna have my CNA license by the end of this year, thanks to the ALT school supporting me. We're a family, and I know so many of you have been to our, like, Thanksgiving turkey feasts. And hopefully, the new member can also come to our next one if our ALT school continues. That's all.
Thank you, Michelle. Jordan Small.
Hello. My name is, um, Jordan Small. I am a freshman and a current member of the Sanford Alternative School. And I do not think I would have been able to get all of my credits freshman year if I had not joined this program. I, since COVID hit, had been struggling really bad and wasn't able to attend school kind of the way that I used to. And I would be struggling very bad if it weren't for ALT. I would also, I know it's getting kind of repetitive talking about ALT at this point, but I'd also like to bring up the fact that I have had hundreds of people express their support for this program and how much it has helped them and other people that they know and love. And I've had so many people I know personally and I love that have expressed that they would not be able to go to school anymore if this program wasn't a thing. Because so many of us have such a hard time in the main building due to, like, bullying and not being able to get the support that we need. And in all, since it's smaller classrooms, they're able to hold you to more accountability, and you're able to get your work done a lot easier, because the people who do need extra help get the extra help that they need. A lot of people in this program consider it to be their second home or even their first. And a lot of them do not have support at home where, in this program, they got the support that they needed, and they were able to excel. And a lot of people were mentioning how if they hadn't had this program in this state or another, they would have never graduated. And I feel like this program, if it does not continue, we will have a lot of students in the future that will not continue going to school once they hit high school, because the thought of it is just so tormenting. And I know students going to school does help with the money factor. So losing them would lose schools a lot of money, because I know at least half of these students that are currently in the forty have expressed wanting to drop out if this program goes. That's really all I have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Jordan. Is there anybody else? One more?
Just one more.
Nicole Shepherd.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Nicole Shepherd, and I am the lead dispatcher for Ledmere Transportation. I have been driving a school bus for twelve years now. In those twelve years, I have driven a lot of kids. And what I will say is, driving all these kids, you hear all the stuff. You're the equivalent to a bartender in the school world. You hear all the stuff that they think you don't hear. Sorry. What I will say is that there have been countless conversations about this teacher did this, this teacher sucks, blah, blah, blah. What you have never heard on any of these buses are any of these kids bad-mouthing the ALT teachers. My daughter is an ALT student, and she spent her entire freshman year literally hiding in the bathroom. And if she wasn't in the bathroom, she was making up one excuse after another to go see the nurse. To the point where I had to tell the nurse, unless she is bleeding from her eyes, "Do not tell me about what's going on with her. She needs to be there." When she was put into the ALT program, it was an amazing transformation to watch. Because all of a sudden, there's the hope. All of a sudden, there's the, "Maybe I can do that." All of a sudden, there's the, "I can do that." And now, day one, after hearing about ALT possibly going away, it was instant recall of freshman year. The tears are there, the anxiety's there, the hopelessness is all there once again. I don't, I don't truly think you understand, the teachers in the ALT program are worth their weight in gold. What they do, what they accomplish with these kids is insurmountable. You, they literally pull off miracles with these children. And I'm curious to see where the dropout rate is going to come if this program goes away. Because I know for a fact, my kid has already said, "I will not return unless it's to ALT." So you can already count one more for a dropout for next year. It's going to be her senior year. And for her to come that far in that short amount of time, from complete failing to being hopeful and having a future is, it's mind-blowing what they've done with her, honestly. The measure of success is for each individual. It's subjective. What's one person considers to be success is a failure to another. My daughter's success is knowing that with the ALT program, she is going to graduate. Her attendance, although still not stellar, is greatly improved. And her grades are greatly improved. So I would just like to, I know it's hard. I know it's very hard for you guys, and I am so very sorry that you guys are in this position. But to cut this program, it's, it should be unthinkable. It shouldn't even be a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there anybody else that would like to?
I want to tell you this. A former ALT student named Haley Parisee Witten. I got married last week, and on, she married a marine. And on the way to Maryland, she sent this to me, and she asked that it would be read.
Okay.
Any of you be willing to read this?
I'll read it. This is from Haley Parisee, right?
Yes.
"My high school experience at the Alternative High School was the best years of my young life for several reasons. Number one, personalized learning environment. The Alternative High School provided a personalized learning environment tailored to our individual needs and interests. With smaller class sizes, students had the opportunity to receive more individualized attention from teachers and pursue coursework that aligned with their passions and goals. Number two, innovative teaching methods. The Alternative High School embraced innovative teaching methods that engaged students in active learning and critical thinking. Whether through project-based learning, experiential activities, or hands-on projects, we were encouraged to explore concepts in depth and apply their knowledge in real-world contexts. Number three, strong sense of community. A strong sense of community permeated the Alternative High School, fostering a supportive and inclusive environment where students felt valued and accepted for who they are. Whether through collaborative projects, group discussions, or extracurricular activities, students developed meaningful connections with peers and teachers, creating a sense of belonging and camaraderie. Number four, emphasis on holistic development. Beyond academics, the Alternative High School placed a strong emphasis on holistic development, nurturing students' social, emotional, and personal growth. Through counseling services, mentorship programs, and enrichment activities, students were supported in navigating challenges, building resilience, and developing essential life skills that would serve them well beyond high school. And number five, the school's commitment to individualized support and innovative teaching methods empowered students to reach their full potential. Overall, my high school experience at the Alternative High School was great, because it provided a nurturing and empowering environment that fostered academic achievement, personal growth, and a strong sense of community. It was a place where students were encouraged to embrace their unique strengths and passions, setting them on a path towards success and fulfillment in life. I can say with confidence that this form of schooling helped me grow into a stronger, well-rounded individual into my adult years. I couldn't be more grateful that it exists."
Can you please thank Haley? Thank you.
Yeah, do you want? Oh, okay. Okay. Is there anybody else? I just want to say thank you to everybody for coming tonight, for sharing your stories and for sharing your feelings and your thoughts. It is greatly appreciated. It's never easy sitting up here, especially during budget season. And just having community members come and be part of this whole process. Certainly, sometimes it doesn't make it easier, sometimes it does, but what it always does is, at least for me, it fills me with a real strong sense of community and it's one of the reasons why I love Sanford so much and why we chose to make a life here for our children and for ourselves. And I just want to say thank you for coming.
Chair, I just have a question about the agenda. Where in the agenda is it stated about the budget presentation?
It's going to be around the new business item when the school committee votes on it.
Oh, is it J1?
Correct.
Okay. And so we have passed C, which is adjustments, correct, to the agenda?
Or any public comments?
So, yeah, so this is kind of unorthodox, but I guess I need some guidance from you guys pertaining to the agenda for moving forward. For me personally, I would like to table that presentation. I, I don't feel that I can move forward today without taking into consideration. Even if we end up at the same place that we have previously discussed, I feel like we owe it to those who have shared and for us to go back and circle back just to ensure that we've done our work and it doesn't feel transparent, having taken almost an hour of sharing to then not have had an opportunity as a school committee to discuss what was shared. So I'm not sure how to make that adjustment. Yeah. Keeping in mind that we very well can end up in the same place. You know, this comes down to the dollars and cents of running a school budget, so I don't want to give people false hope. I want to do the right thing.
If I can piggyback on that, you took the thoughts right out of my head. I just, I need a moment. I need a moment, I need some time. We need to process and do, I feel like we've done the work and we've put in the diligence and the, but I feel like we need to do it again, just if it's not for any other reason, just to honor this moment.
And, and, and this isn't the first time, right, that we have been faced as a community? And, you know, we can all speak from our own lived experiences. Matt, you were a part of the moving from five block to four block. Emily, you were on the school committee at that time. We had a room full of people and the decision was made that night. And what happens when we, when we set structure like that, I fear that people don't feel heard. And so I just want to ensure that people feel heard. Again, reiterating that we could arrive at the same place. So I would make a recommendation that we go through the list of the communications and then I would make a motion for us to take a, or to take a break, a recess.
So that's what I was, I was going to ask, if it was a break or if it was a tabling it? Because that's a different.
It's different. You want a recess, she wants to table.
I will go with the consensus. I think it's really difficult to table it at this point. I think what Matt, and maybe I'm speaking out of term, what you're trying to get at with us passing a budget to set it to the city tonight was for at least to get them like a week to look at our materials. If we didn't pass it tonight, when are we going to do it? Because their meeting is March 5th, correct?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for their comments, heartfelt comments. In addition to what we heard tonight, there were a number of people who reached out to us in writing and also shared their, their own personal experiences and advocating for the program as well. I think it's, and I understand, I think, everyone's thoughts. What we have to keep in mind is, we do have to present an approved school budget to the city council before their workshop next Tuesday, March 5th. So if it's not done this evening, and I understand the circumstances around that, we are going to have to be able to do that. Emily, in terms of getting information out to people ahead of time, I'm not sure that that's a driving factor is having it a week in advance because the plan going forward would be, March 5th is the first budget workshop with the city council. Both the city and the school will give overviews of their budgets at that time. The following Tuesday on March 12th is when the school will provide their budget in much more detail for the city council. So I do want, I do think it's important for us to have an approved budget in time to be able for the March 5th meeting, to be able to do that. So if it's not done, if, if the agenda item is tabled this evening, we would have to schedule another meeting to be able to come back, give people notice to come back. It can be an abbreviated meeting, but we'd have to make sure that the city, the chambers are available and that we can get people to come and do that, which, you know, is something that we can do. I don't foresee that as being a problem.
Yeah, I didn't mean that, I, I meant it more, it's more customary that we give them time to look at materials. It's not a necessity, but it has always been done. They get materials, they have time to digest it. I think if we decide to table it, and we have to do a meeting this week to do this, I don't know what everyone else's schedule looks like. I'm, I can be open.
And we'd want to give enough notice too, for people to have that meeting, to do that. So I think we'd be looking at later in the week on Thursday, right? Or we could also look at next Monday. I know that's challenging because we already have some conflicts with some things, but we could be able to maybe do something earlier. Late afternoon type of thing. We might have to reschedule some things, but that's something that we could look at doing by next Monday. It's late because it's right up against what we have to do to give out, give information to the city council. And so I'd probably recommend more later this week.
I, I would like to button it up this week. I, I can understand wanting to digest everything that was said tonight, everything that was sent via email, but we have done a lot of work on this up until now. So I, for me personally, I would like to see us approve something this week and get it done with. Do we need to make a motion to like, I mean, we're talking about what's on item J1. So we're kind of like out of step here. Do, do we need to have a motion to?
Amend?
Amend the agenda or should we, do we just now keep going with the agenda?
I think we go with the agenda till we get to J. I think what we're all trying to do is help everyone here so they don't have to wait for us to get to J. If that, if that is what is going to be the, the action that we take.
We have some fun stuff to discuss though. We've got our student, student representatives here to do the student spotlight, so.
So, you want me to move forward with, okay. Right. Next item is communications and we wanted to mention the names of people that sent in emails regarding the alt debt program. Again, I'm so sorry if I butcher names. I just want to fall under my excuse of English is not my first language. Tyler Ketchum, Dakota Shepherd, Jordan Carrick, Lakota Stevens, Stephen Mary Gannaway, Theo Rogers, Mackenzie Valerio, Ashley Hartnett, Jasmine Espinoza Gonzalez, Matthew Wellwood, Shannon Lee, Tyler McGrath, Sophie Billado, Pam Cody, Christina Rideout, Rebecca Labor Smith, Alyssa Dixon, Haley Witten, Haley Parise, and Josh Baucher. Thank you for your emails. Committee reports are next. None? None. Superintendent reports?
Sure. So I think we can shift things over now to our student reps. Give us any updates of what's going on.
So I think Emma's going to cover Greece in a bit, but I did want to say that this Thursday, the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard is coming to give a presentation to SHS and SRTC students that are interested. I know that Mrs. Preston posted on the class of 2024 Google Classroom, a signup sheet for anybody that's interested. It's going to be Thursday during Spartan time, I'm pretty sure. And if anyone has any like interest in working in the shipyard at all post-high school, I would definitely recommend to fill out that sheet as fast as possible.
Before I give my report, I just wanted to say that especially to the students who came, I understand how important it is to get help with your anxiety and I struggle a lot with anxiety and I'm really sorry that you feel like that might get taken away from you and I'm sure that's really terrifying and I really hope that you continue to feel safe in your school building and it works out for you. Also, we had vacation last week, so not a ton of stuff happened, but we're in the long stretch now before April break, so we're trying our best to get through it. And the Sanford girls' basketball team made it pretty far. They got to the semifinals before they fell to Gorham.
So I just got back from the Greece trip. I think there were like seventy-five of us that went. It was like kind of around that number, but I just wanted to say what an incredible experience it was. It was really a trip of a lifetime. We were able to like be immersed in all of like their culture, their different foods, the music there, even the people, they were very welcoming and very respectful. But yeah, no, it was just, it was really the experience of a lifetime. We like, we were always doing something. We were like on a bunch of guided tours and stuff. We were learning a lot. The bus rides, the views were like incredible, but we were just always doing something which was amazing. I think probably one of like the most memorable nights was we were walking around and we like, they had like this big carnival thing. And so it was like this big like, kind of like dance like party thing. And it was so nice just to be able to kind of communicate with like other people like there and stuff. They had fireworks and stuff and it was just really a great experience. But I'm very grateful to all the chaperones and everyone that kind of like worked so hard. I think it's been like a year in the making, so it was just a really great experience. So I just wanted to update you all on that.
Awesome. That's great to hear. What a great experience of a lifetime for that. That's awesome. Great. Thank you, students. We can transition now right into hot off the press, the latest Sanford spotlight. If you want to, three of you want to tag team that?
Yeah, okay, I can start it off. So the Sanford High School and SRTC students, they completed the JMG Career Exploration Badge. And so there were actually a hundred thirty Sanford High School students and SRT students that actually participated in this. So it was forty hours of meaningful work where they were able to have hands-on employer engagement and experiences along online modules utilizing JMG's learning management system. And so if you'd like to read more about that, there's a little letter linked below. And then also, we have the Sanford High School Unified Basketball Team and they bonded, they bond on and off the courts with like their coaches. And so the Unified Basketball Partners students with developmental disabilities and students without disabilities to train, compete, and represent Sanford. So if you'd like to also read more about that, there's also a letter linked below. And then also at Sanford Pride Elementary, the students leaders, they named the new mascot. And so it was, the, the student leaders are comprised of third and fourth grade students with representatives from each classroom. And so at the beginning of each school year, the outgoing fourth graders present to their peers outlining what it takes to be leader. And they, they can then pass it on the responsibility to the next leaders of the school. So if you'd like to read more about that, there's also something linked below. And then looking at the other elementary schools and middle school, we have at Margaret Chase Smith, the students participated in Global School Play Day. The initiative encourages unstructured playtime, fostering creativity, and problem solving and social skills among the students. There's a letter linked there to read more about that. And then at Carl J. Lamb, there were students that participated in collaborative art and music lessons on Lunar New Year this year. And so students, they actually made dragon masks in art and they learned about traditional Chinese music, dances, and instruments in music class. And so there's a letter linked there below for that. And then Sanford Middle School had their first cooking club, which was a blast. Students crafted their own savory spaghetti sauce, assembled fresh salads with dressings and baked garlic bread. And then Sanford Pride, the students in Ms. Mercier's and Ms. Flannery's class celebrated Hundredth Day of School by counting collections to hundreds by tens and ones. So there's also a letter linked there below to read more about that.
SRTC represented at Hall of Flags in Augusta. Sanford Regional Technical Center Director Matt Peterman represented SRTC in the Hall of Flags at the Capitol in Augusta on Wednesday, February 7th. There's more about that at the link. First responders versus teachers basketball game in a display of community camaraderie and spirited competition. Sanford first responders and teachers recently took to the basketball court for a charity game on Thursday, February 15th, which allowed people from different parts of the community to come together. CJL Kindergarteners compete, complete K for Maine showcase. Students in Mrs. Brands and Ms. Wector's kindergarten classes at Carl J. Lamb had their K for Maine showcase on Friday, February 9th, which is a good opportunity for students to share their work in Unit Two with their families. Staff meal deliveries at Sanford High School, or sorry, Sanford Middle School. Sanford Middle School has found a creative way to encourage community spirit while teaching cooking to life skill, cooking to life skill students. Staff meal deliveries. Each Friday, the staff is informed about the upcoming week's menu. There's more about that there. The Spartan Times, inspired by the NFL, Mr. Ford's Sports History and Leadership Class completed a recent project promoting an important cause of their choosing and designing a pair of cleats for that cause. And SHS Jazz Groups qualify for state competition. All three of Sanford High School's jazz groups qualified for the State High School Jazz Instrumental Festival. The three groups are Jazz Ensemble One, Jazz Ensemble Two, and Jazz Combo. And the State Instrumental Festival is on March 15th and 16th.
The SHS senior Tucker Walker won the shot put state championship with a wild fifty-three foot, ten inch throw, which is record breaking. And he's qualified for the New England Indoor Championships that are on Saturday, March 2nd. For the employee spotlight, it is Carl J. Lamb Music Teacher, Hady Skorak, who has been working at the school department for two years. And then there's a link to read more about that. The cafe at SRTC is now open, which is operated by the culinary students in SRTC. It's open on most Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from February to early May. There is a link to, or where you would contact Sam Bonzi if there's anything that you think would be a good story idea for future newsletters. There is a link to read information about the budget, the school budget, I mean. And then just a reminder that attendancy, attendance is very important. And just a short, whatever about that, as well as a link about the, to the school calendar. The pre-K lottery is now open until March 14th. There's a link in order to register there. Children who are four years of age on or before October 15th, 2024 are eligible. There's information about free meals at the different schools, as well as breakfast times, as well as the little thing about to download the Sanford Spartan app. As well as some of the highlights from the newest Main Street memo, including the Valentine Bandit visiting Sanford, a special one hundred and fifth birthday, and the presidential primary information, as well as the additional links to the various different websites and social medias at Sanford to stay up to date.
Thank you, student representatives. Great job. A lot going on in Sanford. Congratulations to Tucker for his state championship shot put. Also, I was able to attend. to Tucker for state championship shot put. Also, I was able to attend the First Responders against the staff of Pride and MCS as part of their PTA event before we went down to the playoff basketball games. And what a great community event to come back and see so many people come out to be able to support that cause for it. So kudos all around. Couple field trips, three field trips are announced. Our Key Club has their annual district convention that always takes place in April, and it's no different this year, April fifth through the seventh. That'll take place in Springville, Massachusetts. We also have our Skills USA Competition. That's coming up. That's the state competition for our SRTC students. That's also an overnight, March fourteenth and fifteenth in Bangor. And then our SRTC Building Trade Students on March twenty-second are taking a field trip down to the Journal of Light Construction Trade Show. That's down in the Providence Convention Center in Rhode Island. So those three field trips coming up, and that's the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you so much. Director's reports. Mr. Boos here is gonna talk about pre-K lottery.
I had an abbreviated report tonight due to the agenda, and it's been abbreviated more because Aiden shared the information about the pre-K lottery. Just to let you know that the pre-K lottery did open this morning for pre-K registration for the twenty, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. We have ninety-six slots that will be available across our elementary schools and at SRTC. As of this afternoon, we had eighty folks that are already registered. So eighty, yeah. So I'm really excited about the interest. We are, one thing that is new this year is that we are closing that survey mid-March to hopefully notify parents right around the April first, so parents have a little quicker notification, so they can plan ahead. So if you know anybody that's interested, please visit our website, and if they need any help, they can give our office a call for that. Any questions?
Steve, that has no income guidelines at all, right? No constraints?
No income guidelines. It is free, free lunch, free transportation, and it runs a full school day, eight to three.
Thank you. Okay, now we're onto new business and how do we maneuver this?
So new business, first item is J one. The original plan was the final two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget. To approve that, to give it to the City Council Budget Committee, we would be making a recommendation this evening. The Budget Committee has been working since the end of January, and January twenty-ninth, that's something that people can follow along with for what we had from the original budget, to recommendations and work that has been done right off through the various budget workshops, including earlier this evening. So the original plan was to also kind of quickly go through that, that presentation, but it feels like there may be some other differing thoughts on that. So before I go into that, I'm open to if any of the other school committee members have any other ideas or suggestions in terms of how to handle that.
So the question posed by Jen was to have a recess or to have a, to table it?
To table it and revisit at the end of this week?
Thoughts on that?
I mean, it really, for me, it will depend on when, when we do it and time. I mean, I already have my calendar pulled up, so it will really just depend on.
I think we need-
I'm fine either way.
I think we need a motion to table it. We'd need a second to approve it, and then some discussion.
I make a motion to table J one.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
No.
Oh, any discussion?
I mean, I really guess someone needs to throw out some dates and times if that's the direction you guys want to go in.
So to have another meeting legally, I don't have the, it in front of me in the sense of-
Twenty-four hour public-
It's twenty-four hours for a regular meeting, not an emergency meeting?
I don't think, I don't think the new budget constitutes as an emergency.
Right.
It has to be current budget.
I thought it was longer than twenty-four hours. I thought it was forty-eight hours. That's why I don't have it in front of me, but I thought it was forty-eight hours, but-
I thought it was twenty-four on the state.
I'm not sure. I'm not prepared to answer that this evening. I wasn't anticipating that.
I think it, yeah. Thank you.
Do we have to come to a consensus on the day and time, or can we discuss that after the meeting, pull it out?
For, for me, it's really gonna dictate whether I can table it this week or not.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to have some idea what you guys are thinking about.
Friday. What does Friday look like?
I would, it would be best because of my work schedule to do Wednesday or Thursday evening this week. But if we're gonna do Friday, it would have to be after six.
I have to go see my-
Okay. So would, how about Thursday at six o'clock?
I can't do Thursday at six o'clock. I have to drive to Boston.
I can do daytime hours.
I'm open anytime except Thursday night. I've got-
Thursday morning?
I can do Thursday morning. I cannot do Thursday afternoon.
Thursday morning, Melissa? Thursday morning, can we, can we do it early, eight o'clock?
I could do Thursday morning.
You can do Thursday morning? Thursday morning? Does Thursday morning work for you?
Yep.
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday morning it is. What time?
Eight.
Eight.
Does Matt have availability on Thursday?
I don't think it matters. Just I-
Just knowing that it's Monday.
Let Thursday morning, see if Chambers is open. I would just look and see what we, what we have to follow as far as, sorry, as far as notice goes, if that gives us enough time.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anything?
Aiden's got a question.
Sorry, Aiden. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is going to that meeting something that I can be excused from school for? Because there's, I have some thoughts that I would like to share during the workshop, if that's okay?
Excuse from school.
Is that?
We could probably make that work.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So just to be clear, though, this would be not a workshop. This would be a regular school committee meeting, because the workshop, we would not be having people speak. So this is a regular meeting that we are trying to plan on Thursday morning. Is that correct? Because that's my understanding.
Yes.
Yes.
And is it also my understanding, I mean, we are, we are hoping to pass something Thursday morning?
Yes.
Yes.
And I apologize for everybody that has got, that's working, because I know that that impacts a lot. We also have jobs as well, so have to work around hours as well. So we apologize.
Yes, we, we, the open, the meeting is open to the public. I wanna be able to hopefully get it set up so it can be streamed and it also be recorded. I don't, I don't like writing checks. I can't cash, so we're gonna be worked at every effort that we can to be able to do that. We'll get the notice out, and we hope we can also make sure it gets signed up to be recorded and streamed. Yeah. Yep.
Matt, are you still presenting tonight the budget as is, or are you gonna skip over that? Well, I mean, they were not here-
It was, it was part of J one.
Yeah. I, I think it would, I know that we've all been here for a long time so far, but I think it would benefit the people in the room to see the budget presented as is right now and what we're facing. I mean, I wouldn't go in depth the way that you did at the workshop prior, but give an overview of how we got to this point and what that means on the city taxes.
Okay, so it looks like, do we wanna take action, though, on tabling it initially, or will that be after I'm done presenting? Okay. Okay. Thank you to everyone for your patience as we continue to adjust. Very fluid process. So if you look, we'll go to the next slide. As I've mentioned, this is something that, I think if you can go to, no, go back to the previous slide. Thank you. This is a budget that started out with a nine-point-two percent increase in expenses and a twenty-nine-point-four percent in taxation. We've since brought that number down with recommended changes, even this evening, that it's got that down to five-point-nine percent in expenses from nine-point-two, and we've got it down to nine-point-four percent in taxation from a starting point of twenty-nine-point-four. If you go to the next page, the recommended changes that we went over earlier in the workshop this evening totaled one hundred and sixty-two thousand. Those are adjusting stipends, adjusting department head stipend, restructuring the GLL stipends, removing a bridge teacher, microphone receivers removed from forming art center, beach bleachers at Cobb Stadium upgrades or replacement or repairs there have been also removed, restructuring technology repair, special ed admin assistant moving twenty-five percent of that position into the IDEA budget, reduce art supplies, and returning the counseling receptionists into the budget. Those total one hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and eighteen. Those are on top of the other changes that have been recommended previously on February twelfth, a total of one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four. And there is a list of the different adjustments there in terms of some of the positions and programs that we were talking about. If you go back to February fifth, those are the expenses we moved, we made for, on the expense side totaling seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three. We also made some changes on the revenue side totaling one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight. That got us to a grand total on February fifth of two million, three thousand, six hundred and eleven in changes. And so what, where that has us is as of this evening, looking at a five-point-nine percent, as I mentioned, in expenses, when you factor in the one hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen, and then that would be a nine-point-four percent in taxation. And then if we go through, there's some changes district-wide there that you see that are some things that are impacting the budget around some new things in some health insurance and retirement costs. If you go to the next one, there's our expenses. They've increased five-point-nine percent. I do wanna point out that for our budget, just to turn the page, just to have this year's existing budget, just to turn that and roll that over to next year is a five percent increase of three million, ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seventeen. You'll then see, we also did some enrollment because there's some recommended changes and elimination of some positions. So there is an enrollment spreadsheet as of February twelfth. There's a link there in the presentation. And then we broke it down by the articles in terms of what you see there. The regular instruction in Article One, that's increased seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That's actually down from where you saw the turn the page of one million, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven. So that is partly covered by some of the positions that have been eliminated. There are some added positions to the budget. They're not new positions. You see the ones with the asterisks are the ones that are coming in to positions that are currently ESER positions for that, that are moving in, recommending moving them into the local budget. Those are social workers at our three elementary schools, as well as the middle school. And we also have two English second language teachers, one which was in an ESER funds this year. That's moved to the local budget. A lot of that has to do with increased enrollment for our ESOL students. We also did get additional funding of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars to put towards those two ESOL positions that are coming in. The three pre-K ed techs, we are required. When you have pre-K classrooms of sixteen in each classroom, you saw that already. We've got eighty people already signed up for the lottery. To do that, we need to have that student-teacher ratio sixteen to two. That was something that was covered by, those three spots were fifty percent of that was covered by a grant this current year. We knew that that was coming this year in terms of where we are. If you go to the next slide, you can see the changes we made to Article One or the recommended considerations to change. On the fifth, we removed two academic coaches positions from the local budget. We removed a fourth grade MCS teacher. And then there are some other supplies and equipment that we also removed as well. On the school committee budget workshop on the twelfth, we removed a phys ed and health teacher at the high school, two middle school teachers due to enrollment, restructuring of the ed techs throughout the district, five positions there eliminated, remove the attendance coordinator at Sanford High School, removing the alternative learning program at Sanford High School, adjusting tuition reimbursement, some savings on some other costs. That was done on February twelfth. And then this evening, we had some small adjustments there for that. If we go to the next slide, that's Article Two in Special Education. There's some added positions there. Those are positions moving over from ESER. There's some positions that are not continuing in the budget. I do wanna talk about that. We understood that when we were looking at it, a lot of some of the ESER positions that we had were needs that we had. We had before COVID. Those were something that as we were trying to put those into the local budget, we were able to then use them for ESER funds to continue that, realizing that we were kicking that down the road and that there could be a potential cliff. But we also knew that as the needs come back and change through that, we're also adjusting in terms of the different priorities that we have. So it's not just something that we're adding on to these positions to the budget. And I know that I do wanna also probably, and I should have shared this at the beginning, I can share this now, none of these considerations that we sent were easy as it comes back into it. They're all very difficult. They all have an impact. You see the challenge that's in front of us when you start looking at the costs in terms of what that takes. And so for us to be able to do that, there's none of this that, because we're eliminating things that are not effective or not working in terms of that. I can't stress that enough in terms of as we've been looking through this budget process to do what we can to be able to manage that, to have the opportunity to try to impact as many students and staff as we possibly can, but also trying to balance that with the needs of what a tax increase can also be something that would be able to be absorbed by our taxpayers. So getting back, Special Education, those are positions moving over from ESER, but you also saw on the right-hand side, some of those that are not continuing are some adjustments that we've been able to make, and a lot of that is driven by enrollment. Next, Article Three, SRTC. We made some changes there. That increased by three hundred and four thousand. We were very helped in that situation, that we have some new revenue coming in with the cost sharing for the sending schools of SRTC. There were some positions that we moved from the Perkins Grant into the local, but those were offset. There were some offsetting things that we moved from the local into Perkins to be able to better do that. There is one ed tech that is currently covered by ESER positions that is recommended in this budget. It's an ed tech for the entire SRTC, but a big part of what that, that position does is it'll allow us to provide the coverage for SRTC for the pre-K at SRTC to make sure we can meet coverage for the sixteen to two ratio when we need to also honor contracts and cover the breaks. On the right-hand side, you can see that there's some items not continuing, which was requested in that budget. Article Four, Other Instruction. You can see that there are some new items in that budget on the left-hand side, but you can also see in the right-hand side that there are a number of other things that were requested in that budget originally that were, that have been recommended to be removed. Article Five, Student and Staff Support. You'll see some new items there in the budget moving over, but you also see some things not continuing in that budget as well, as we try to be able to balance that. Article Six, System Admin. There is some restructuring there around our Title One services. So there's moving from Title into the local budget there. Uh, so there's moving from Title, uh, into the local budget there. Article Seven, School Admin is, uh, increased there, uh, by 51,34. That's moving the nursing assistant that was needed, um, at Sanford Middle School that's currently covered by ESER funds, moving into the local budget. And then you can see some other restructuring, uh, and reductions that have been done for not continuing in the budget. Article Eight, Transportation, uh, that's up, um, 18.8%. We don't have a lot of control over that. We went over that in the budget workshop that we pointed that out, that those are things that we don't own our school buses. We go out to bid. Uh, we've had a, uh, five-year contract that just, uh, ended. We've gone out to bid. The lowest bid that we got gives us an increase of 402,969. Those are the costs going up as well as increased costs for, uh, special ed transportation, athletic trips, uh, transportation and, uh, also paying for monitors on the special ed, uh, transportation. Article Nine, Facilities Maintenance, that's only up 194,000, um, 209,269. We did have to move back in the mowing salaries when we were trying to be creative and putting that as part of another combination position, but when we eliminated that, we have to make sure we add that back in. And the second boiler at Willard, uh, as though needed was something that we were, under the circumstance, were moving from this budget. Article Ten, Debt Service is just a pass-through for all of our construction projects coming through the state. Uh, each year that decreases. This year it's decreased by 1.6%, 171,769. Article Eleven, uh, we did take out the microphones from the Performing Arts Center, so their increase is only 12,522. Most of that is turn the page. Sanford Community Adult Education with the increased subsidy that we have, overall net taxation decreased there by 10,797. So I think that's important to point out. Here's a list of, uh, positions that are not continuing in the 2024, 2025 school year. There's a total of 34 there. They're a combination of local positions coming out of the local budget. There's some that came out of grants that are, um, ending. And then as mentioned, the ESER positions, as you can come back. So you see a number of positions there, the asterisk, those ESER positions. The ones that don't have an asterisk are positions in the local budget coming out. And then you can also see the ones that have a grant, um, that is also not being able to continue. I don't think there's anybody that would look at any position on that list and be happy that those positions are going away, whether that's coming from the local or coming from the grants or coming from the ESER, um, for that. And so, um, the, uh, looking at it, it's going to be a total appropriations budget. If there's no changes to that, and obviously we had a lot of talking tonight that I think was, uh, something that we all want to process. And so the total appropriation for the budget, if that was to be accepted, would be 65,98,610 that we would pass on to the school, uh, the city council. And that would be an increase in expenses of 3,611,548 and taxation impact of over a million, uh, point five of 9.4%. And then.
That's it.
That's it. So I, I know that was fast with that, but I hope some people can get an idea as you're able to look at that in terms of looking at the challenge that's in front of us to be able to try to continue to meet all the needs of the school districts in the best way possible that we can by allocating resources, but also, um, being able to make sure that what we're doing is going to be something that the city council can support and ultimately are, is also going to be fair to our taxpayers.
So with that, Matt, I just want to say, um, just because that was a little faster than earlier, that is a 9.4% increase to taxation and we've cut 3,282,103, uh, dollars. And that's with the alt, um, school in that, um, budget cut. And I just looked to my committee members and as well as the administrators and the public, just to say, you know, just to ask where else we could take that from. Um, the social workers that are added in from the ESER positions is really the only place that I can think to go. Um, and just the elementary school is only 242,000, so it still does not touch that full 335 from alt.
I just want to say, I appreciate Emily making the suggestion to go through the budget and I hope that if that was too fast, that you have the time to go back through it. You know, the 34 positions that are listed do list ESER positions, but we're doing the work holistically all the way around. We're looking at every position, positions that were ESER, but also existing positions. And in the prior workshop, I asked for the, um, enrollment numbers per school and I'll review those. At Margaret Chase Smith School has 425 students. Carl J. Lamb has 424 students. Sanford Pride Elementary has 378 students. Sanford Middle School has 918 students and Sanford High School has 1,084 students. So with that being said, as Matt said, using the resources to make sure that we are, um, using them in a way that is appropriate for all 3,000 students in our school district. Additionally, speaking to the taxation, you know, I appreciate Mary's comment in, um, being willing to absorb that, um, increase in taxation. However, we know from data that our community isn't built like that. So we have Alice's numbers and reports, um, that we receive and those are our families living in poverty and we're teetering around 50%. Um, so whether those people are single-family homeowners, they can't absorb that kind of expense, or if they are in rental units, those investment property owners are not absorbing that expense. They will pass that on to our families. Um, we see that time and time again through the increase in our homeless students' numbers. I think Matt could speak to that and Steve Bousier could speak to that, that annually the number of students in our school district that are homeless increases pretty exponentially in a short amount of time. So I, I just, I'm hopeful that people take into consideration that, um, we know that everybody's here for alt ed and alt ed has not been targeted. Echoing Matt's sentiment, every position is important, every program is important and it's not easy work to be the one who has to allocate the resources.
I would just add that every, every cut has a huge impact in that staff members' personal being, their family, the students that they touch, the schools that they're in. So we don't take any, um, item easily by having it off of the budget. Um, I know there was a lot of chit-chat about the ESER funds. Um, of those 38, there's, I want to make sure I get it correct. It was 19 that are, that are, that are non-ESER that are being removed. So.
No, let me just, there's.
I should go back to the.
Sorry.
I have it right.
There's removed 19 of them are ESER. One are, one is a grant and 14 already existing local for a total of 34 positions removed.
So thank you. So 14 are non-ESER and non-grants. So just to reiterate, every position is impacting a lot of people, every single one. Um, and just, it was a question that I had asked at the end of the workshop, but I think many of you weren't there, was getting back to the last slide. We don't need to, but I can just, these are numbers I do have written down in front of me. Um, so with alt ed being cut, we were at a 5.9% expense. Adding alt ed back in, it would go from 5.9% to 16, I'm sorry, 6.4%. The taxation would go from 9.4%. Adding it back in would go to 11.5%. So I just, um, wanted to sort of reiterate that. That wouldn't be a question that we could answer right now. And the city budget, so our budget, city budget brings different numbers. Okay.
So then I'm, I guess I'm a little confused hearing what you said, Jen, hearing what you're saying, Amy, and what the implications are with adding, uh, to our taxation, adding alt ed back, why we're tabling this.
I personally was going to vote the budget down because I do want to add it back in. So I was just stating the facts about the budget change and I want, so that's where I stand. Unfortunately, no, public comments over.
Are we ready to vote?
We're voting on whether we're tabling it or not? All, right, so.
Any more discussion?
Okay, so my next question would be, are, do I go through every single one?
Just take a vote?
Okay, um, all in favor for tabling the dis, the budget until Friday?
Nope.
Oh, Thursday, sorry. That's right, it ended up being Thursday, tabling it.
Okay.
All in favor? All in favor?
Do you, are you in favor?
Yeah.
That was made by Jen, seconded by Millie. No, by Melissa. No, Jen made it. Did you second that in?
Sure.
No, I, I didn't write it down. Okay. Do we also want to be able to, uh, table the financials until next Thursday with that? Or do we want to be able to go through and hear those?
Yeah, well, we'll table them till next week then.
Take a vote.
I make a motion to table the financial, sorry.
I second it. All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion. Any discussion on that? Okay. So, all in favor? All in favor?
All set for me to move on, Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes, no old business, moving on to resignations, retirement, staff appointments, staff transfers and so on.
All right, we'll start, thank you. We'll start announcing resignations and retirements. And so we'll announce, um, resignations first. Carrie Murkillis, Ed Tech Two, Kate Through Two Resource Room at Sanford Pride. Leah Coverno, Ed Tech Two Self-contained at Sanford Pride. Uh, Connor Beidelman, those two positions are, um, one's effective, um, already and the other one is effective coming March 1st. And then we have two resignation, uh, one resignation, one retirement effective at the end of the school year. Connor Beidelman is in a ESER math position at the high school and Donna Morrison is retiring a second time for us. She, uh, we were able to bring her out of retirement initially, uh, retiring again at the end of this school year. Staff appointments to announce, Jennifer Cody returning back to us, uh, appreciate that. Ed Tech One at Sanford High School, Alicia Waterman, long-term sub for 12 weeks, FMLA. Um, and then at Sanford Middle School, Celeste Broad and Terry Garrish, uh, is part of the first 10, uh, grant at Pride or Play and Learn Facilitators. Debbie Little, Ed Tech Two Resource Room at Pride. And then bringing on James Flood, a second shift custodian, uh, not sure for putting him yet at Sanford Pride or the middle school. Uh, a couple of, three Schedule D appointments to announce, uh, mentor for probationary teacher for the second half of the school year, Jenna Daniels. Mentor probationary, uh, school counselor for the second half of the school year, Sarah Preston. And a mentor for probationary social worker for the second half of the year, Devon Webb. Some transfers to announce, uh, coaching wise at Sanford Middle School, the baseball program, Dan Stefanello, we're going from eighth grade to seventh grade baseball. Mark Bozino going from seventh grade to eighth grade. And then we have a couple in the kitchen, um, Chelsea Graffum from a satellite kitchen manager at six and a half hours, just increasing to seven and a half hours, uh, a day. And Mary Lemay going from the kitchen personnel at Pride to the kitchen personnel at the high school. Uh, one nomination I will need to nominate to the school committee to take action on, Julia Stanton, moving her from an Ed Tech Three CGL to a special education teacher at CGL, um, for that. So that's going to be, um, a recommendation that, um, the school committee approve, uh, Julia Stanton from Ed Tech Three to special ed teacher at CGL.
I make that recommendation. I second it. All in favor? Okay, policies and procedures, second reading. Mr. Bousier.
Good evening again. I have, uh, one policy and one procedure for a second reading tonight. Um, these were existing policies within our policy manual. The first policy is IHBEA, which is a program for English language learners. This policy just details, outlines what our legal obligations are for our English language learners, um, as well as parent involvement and school committee approval of the plan. That's the policy. Um, the actual plan is a procedure, IHBEA-r. Um, this procedure was last updated in 2021. The changes in this plan include, um, changes to the English learner designation to multilingual learner to reflect the current main Department of Education language. It updates some terms and definitions. It updates the screening assessment we use for kindergarten students. We no longer use the Weeder, the, uh, Weeder screener for kindergartner. Um, it also adds some new performance levels for the access testing, moves the writing of the personal learning plan to September, um, and some other minor language changes. So I recommend, um, the updated policy and procedure for you this evening.
I make a motion to accept, uh, policy changes for IHBEA and IHBEA-r.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? We don't have items for future agendas and calendar announcements are next.
Sure, so it looks like we're looking to have a school committee meeting this Thursday, um, February 29th, leap year, at, um, 8:00 AM. 8:00 AM, right here in the chambers, if it's available and also making sure that we'll do our best to get that streamed and recorded, uh, as well. We also, um, are, um, rescheduling the, uh, school committee meeting for Monday, March 4th to Monday, March 11th. That's in conflict with the winter awards night, uh, so we're postponing that March 4th meeting to March 11th. And then we also have, um, another meeting slash workshop scheduled for March 18th, uh, as well. And those are what the upcoming calendar announcements are.
Okay, thank you. A recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:47. I make that recommendation?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All in favor?